Call this meeting to order Madam Court, you take role call please.
Mr. Luther.
Present.
Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Present.
Mr. West.
Present.
Mr. Cummings.
Present.
Eight present, zero absent.
Very good. Thank you all for being here tonight. First order of business, I would ask that for a motion to amend our agenda tonight. We had a request come in late last week to approve a letter of support from SERV and I would entertain a motion to talk about that and see if we can get that done. It's very timely on every half.
So move Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and this is to amend the agenda to talk about that before we do the first reading of Bill sixteen sixty. So, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Very good. Thank you all. So you've got a copy of that in your, in front of you from tonight. And if you haven't read it, I'll give you a minute to read it.
Mr. Mayor, while they're reading, I just, because of my affiliation with SERV, I'm, I'd like to abstain from any votes. I know it's a positive thing, but I just think it would be more appropriate.
Bow me. Yeah, thank you.
I move for approval of the support, the letter of support for SERV Incorporated application for funding.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And again, I apologize for the late notice on this, but we do want to get you all's approval before we just willy-nilly stamp this. Obviously, it's for a great cause and they would like our assistance here, so.
And I apologize because my brain is having a moment. Did we vote to amend the agenda? We just do that?
Yep.
Wonderful. Alright. Great job, Christine.
For once, we're ahead of ya.
Mr. Mayor, why are they, are they looking to relocate?
Yes. Yeah, their space is, is getting tight and they have a place.
I understand that. Where in that location, new location?
That, I don't know that they've divulged that, you know?
Oh, is it, is it pertaining to any city property that we?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yep, I think they're working on it, but, but I don't know that they catch out of the bag on that, but.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I, I, I didn't know if it, it, it's an effect on our property, city property or anything.
As far as I know, it doesn't. If it did, we'd be in, probably doing a closed session. So.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good question, though. Alright, any other concerns on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And we'll get that fired back to them. Thank you all.
I'm the advocate, sir. Thank you.
Great work.
That was seven oh, not a eight oh fifteen.
Yes. I abstain.
Okay. And next up, the reason for our impromptu meet, well, it's not impromptu, scheduled, but it's an extra meeting tonight. We appreciate everybody, everyone's time to come in and do this. If you would, Mr. West, present Bill number sixteen sixty?
Hmm, okay. I don't know they have an ordinance here, but okay. And Bill number sixteen sixty, sixteen sixty? No, I'm sorry, it's on the next page.
It's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I looked at it earlier. Ordinance number blank. An ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the city for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-three and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill number sixteen sixty for a second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping me straight.
And we had the newest version tonight in front of us of the twenty twenty-three budget. And our staff's been working very hard on this the last few days, I know, so. It, it's gonna take time, obviously, to, to go back through this for all of us, but if there's anything you'd like to bring to our attention right now.
Kathy.
I see we have page numbers.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, so, alright, you can just skip over to start, and I apologize, we didn't have enough time. We will have this tightened up next week. But if you skip over to page twenty-seven, I'm sorry, page twenty-six, this is where I just wanted to point out. And you can look, if you compare salaries, proposed salaries for twenty twenty-three to what was adopted in twenty twenty-two, you can see the increases. So, these increase include the, it actually includes the total four percent raise, which again, half in January, half in July, as well as the projected increase for each fund, how much it's gonna cost. So, I won't walk everybody through that one thing at a time, but I just wanted to, that's something that I wanted to bring to your attention. A couple of things that have happened that we are changing up. We have moved some departments. So as you go through and you'll notice, animal shelter is now under police along with its budget. The grant analyst will be under administration in the DOA's office, part of the DOA team. The training officer is also included in FIRE. And it is relatively a lean budget with respect to operations, however, what capital, however, a couple of things that you will note. Under streets, we have to finish the current projects that are underway. The Second Street Bridge and the Second Street, Street project. So, some of those fun, those funds, what we have left over are going to be transferred over, but we are expecting overruns. So, we're, we're having to make that up, and that is noted. Predominantly, capital is, if you, you look at police and FIRE, you'll see, those are being paid out of the use tax money. And they actually have a bit of money that will be rolled over into next year. Kathy is in the process of setting up a, a special account to house that money so that we don't have to continuously transfer it in and out. Am I saying that correctly? So, Councilwoman Sebacher, you had asked me a couple of weeks ago how much was left. And I didn't quite understand what you were asking, because I didn't realize that this was the first year for that tax. So, it's approximately seventy thousand dollars left this year, and that's the FIRE's portion. In reviewing the ordinance and how, and even the ballot, there is no allocation. So unless something changes, it'll be a hundred for FIRE, a hundred for police, unless we have something, you know, happen. But right now, so FIRE, FIRE didn't spend any of that money this year. A hundred and thirty was spent by police. So, next year, they get a hundred and a hundred. And we'll just continue to do that, again, unless something out of the ordinary happens, something, you know.
Stormwater and parks are the same way. It's not, the ballot doesn't specify it. We're just, it's pretty, both are near the bottom, yeah, down the middle.
Should we have that? Shouldn't we have that as part of the ordinance, just to kind of CYA that it's specifically spelled out that way?
I think you have to, I think we have to file what the ballot language said. And it didn't spell, it didn't, and probably the reason that a form administrator did it was in the event, say, one needed, had an emergency situation. But going, unless that happens, I would just like to do a hundred.
Absolutely.
Fifty fifty.
Exactly.
Fifty fifty, fifty percent.
Yes.
That just gives us some discretion if we do have need. How do you?
And, and if they don't use it, it will sit in the fund that can't be settled. And that's easier for us to track. And so, basically, and, and with respect to the budget, what I've explained to both chiefs is, out of their hundred, respectively, if they don't use the money, if they apply for grants, that's money that they can use for match. Because it's for capital, so that's money they can use for match. And we don't have to worry about scrambling to get the money.
Okay. I apologize for my question not being very clear.
It wasn't on you. I, I'm learning. And so, it was when I started asking questions and, and literally, it dawned on me, it's, oh, that's why she's asking, because I thought that it was in place for longer than it's due.
Can I, I do want to ask you a question, Renee. With respect to the budget, we're doing a four percent total. I'm assuming it's just the financial implications is the reason we're splitting it? To save a little bit on that first plus of the year?
Give us enough time to build our, you know, revenues up. It's just, I, I would prefer to do it like that.
Do you see that being a long-term solution, or is that just for this year because of the budget and because of the economic hardship we're in?
So, that's a great question. Some cities, that, that is how they structure it. You know, you get half now, half later. Others, you get it in one. So, to be honest with you, until we get our financial situation better, and it's, it's a decent raise. I mean, two percent nowadays, that's good.
Right.
It's, you know, I mean, I, I know it is what it is, but two and two is four. I would, at least people know to have a, the more increase coming. Until we can get to the point where we can just, you know.
Have you made the, the staff aware of this?
No, a little bit, but no, because I wanted, we have not, I guess we're publicly discussing it now.
Yes.
Because we haven't publicly discussed anything. The findings were not public. I, I just got it, the report. No, I didn't. The only thing I have said is, I am indeed working on something, and it's a start.
I'm just curious what kind of feedback you guys, and only because it's different from what we've done in the past. And again, understanding it's a different time, it's a different economic climate, but I'd just be curious.
Where are we looking to get the revenues for? If we can't afford it now, where do we think that in the middle of the year, we're gonna get those from?
Are you guess rates will, will go into a better?
But, but right now, we're bleeding in gas, correct, Kathy?
I think when I added in, and I was asked to put in the base rate increases, I can look and see what it took gas to.
I believe it was five hundred thousand is what we were anticipating paying.
Yeah, I think it was five fifty-two, maybe it's what it shook out to be.
Right.
But we have that six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar payment to make.
Right.
So, on my spreadsheet, I put a note, because I think that our surplus was four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. But we will have to pay six hundred and seventy-eight thousand on the loan.
Kathy, can you give us a page number on that, please?
Pardon?
Is that what we have? Can you give us a page number on that?
It's in my spreadsheet.
Oh.
So I don't know if it was put in the book or not.
I apologize. Thank you.
You know, just off of, we had a utility board meeting today, and we were talking about raising utilities as well, because we're down a million dollars.
Probably more, once I get October done.
Exactly. And it was only, we were only looking at generating like three hundred and ninety-five thousand, and then we talked about commercial as well, which added, I believe, a hundred and sixty-five thousand more. So that's, we're not even breaking even. So where are we anticipating getting the money for the following years to, I mean, I'm just curious.
And to be honest with you, and that's where it, why it's a start, we might not be, you know, this is, it's not a good situation. And I'll be the first one to say that. I'm not making promises for the, you know, the next few years. The only thing I can say is this is a start, and we can work towards it. There are other means that we could possibly look at, but I'm not ready to look at that yet.
So can I add to Lawrence's question? If, if we're still not breaking even and we anticipate bleeding in the gas department, we're splitting the raise, the across-the-board raise. Are we ensuring that that second bump is going to come, or is that not a hundred percent?
It's in budget.
Okay, so it's going to come?
It's in, it's budgeted. It's budgeted. So the numbers reflect four percent.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Well.
If we get to June, then we're still a million, two million down, we might not be able to do that.
But, well, at that point, the budget is approved. At that point, if we can't do it, then we won't be able to do it.
I mean, the intention is to do it.
The intention is to do it, and the intention is to be optimistic. That we can do it.
The bottom line on electric, without any increases, it does not include the base rate increases or anything that, because it hasn't been presented, the council has not put up a hundred and forty thousand. So we can hope?
We can hope, yeah.
Definitely.
Admittedly, that does make me a bit uneasy, though.
It should. It should make us all uneasy, all of us.
This whole budget is, yeah.
You know, we spent a ton of money two years ago on that rec flash, and we're, we're gonna be hurting from that for many years to try to catch back up on that. We dipped four some, four and some million dollars out of our coffins. So that hurt, guys. That hurt. And it's not gonna be fixed overnight. So these are decisions that, you know, may have been different had we known inflation was coming. But we can't go back in time. We have to deal with what we have.
And the gas issue in, was it in twenty twenty that happened?
Twenty-one, twenty-one. That year and a half ago.
Yeah, a year and a half ago. And if we have another event like that, we're in deep trouble.
Deep, doo-doo.
Can I have a couple of questions? One is on city engineer, or engineers. I see that we, you know, we've allocated some time to, I'm on page forty-six, I'm sorry, folks. Because I was gonna ask the question, but it's in the notes. Since the city engineer and project engineer spend time on airport duties, we have allocated part of their wages accordingly. Okay, so do our, does our engineering department spend time on any utilities, gas, electric, any of that kind of stuff? Should some of their salaries be allocated there? Yeah.
And Kathy, I'm, I'm getting that maybe they're not able to hear you through the mic very well.
Can you hear me, Mike?
I heard you before, but maybe everybody else did.
I thought you could hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you. I understand, but if we should be taking.
I don't know that.
General fund versus enterprise fund, you know, we may want to put some full-time equipment over there. I'm just.
But Daryl's also an engineer.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think he gets a lot of that up to snuff before they get involved, before engineering gets involved.
My second question, and I don't have what page it was. It's on, there it is, one oh seven. Capital projects item says, the capital outlays that exceed the budget provided starting on page one forty. Mine, mine ends on page one thirty-nine.
That's because that wasn't taken out.
Okay.
The capital projects that are listed are under FIRE and police and notes with the engineering. So, it's, we, and I think I just mentioned that too. So we are bringing money over. And there, I'm not there. Kyle asks for a lot, and he can't, I can't give him all of that, but we have to finish the projects that we started. So that's, I'm still trying to see if we can move some things to twenty twenty-four, but the Second Street project.
Right.
We do have to finish that, and I think that's nine hundred and fifty-something thousand.
We also have money that comes from the sales tax for stormwater, so I know we're using some of it there. And also, I want to make sure we're talking about some of these stormwater issues like St. Paul's Lutheran Church. I'll just name them. St. Paul's Lutheran Church and probably there behind, off of Metal Art. You know, we had people come in talking to us about that, so I want to make sure we're, maybe not next year, but we have them on the list. That's what I want.
Well, what we need to do, because that was an issue that was caused by the developer, and the problem is, I've had several citizens come in and talk about situations.
It's all over town.
All over town.
Yeah.
And what I said to Kyle today was, okay, we need to assess this.
Yeah.
And because, A, I would like to have an understanding, especially with people that keep coming in and talking about it. Whether it's citizens, whether it's the church, you know.
Right.
What's out there?
Right.
Before we can develop a plan.
Yep.
So, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just don't like, I don't want a piecemeal. If we're gonna fix it, we need to try to address the issues, not just one issue.
The problem is, is things weren't done properly in the past. Going forward, we can make sure the developers are doing what they need to do. We can't fix the past. We had to fix it, we can't fix what happened, is what I'm trying to say. I know Mr. Washington is aware of another storm sewer issue somewhere, or stormwater issue somewhere.
Over there by the ball field, across the way.
Yeah. So, it's, like you say, it's all over, and we need to know what that, what we're looking at. So, anyway, okay.
So it's, it's not being ignored.
I know. I know it's not being ignored.
It's not being ignored. But once we get an idea of everywhere it is, that can also give us an idea of how much money to adjust to make these repairs.
We might be able to get some federal funds too, you never know. I don't like the way Congress spends money, but I'm, I'm good with spending some of it.
Going back to page twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Under admin. I thought we had an IT manager position in the current. We don't currently have an IT person?
Let me just get, I don't know.
Also, while you're on that one, Jeff, I noticed that there appears to be an error that full-time employees under twenty-three should be ten.
I don't know that those tables were updated. Were they, Renee?
Which one?
The number of employees.
No, that is correct. We do have a IT manager, my Billy.
Okay.
He used to be under finance, now he's under administration.
But it's got a zero.
It has a zero under twenty-two.
Because he wasn't under administration.
Twenty-three is a long.
But he was in finance, so he's now a zero in finance on twenty-three. Okay.
We moved it. That was an adjustment.
I didn't, I didn't see that adjustment in the finance FTE.
I took an.
Okay. And then if the analyst and a complete add?
Mm-hmm, that's K, K, K.
And then the same with the grant? Was that also under?
It was under finance.
Okay.
Now it's, it's a new.
Okay.
Kathy, I'm not sure if you're able to answer this or not. Where are we at on infrastructure, the money that, is that something that we can reach out for?
In this.
Who's in charge of that, to find it out?
It's the ARPA funds.
We don't, we, this is the problem. We are match poor. We're having to scale back certain things, and that, that's the issue, which was an issue I actually brought to a Congress meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago. They want twenty percent. So if you're talking five million dollars, that's a lot of money. And we don't, so we're trying, we're, we're, we are, we do have infrastructure projects. Some of the infrastructure projects that you guys have been normally accustomed to seeing as capital improvements, they're, they're ongoing. So it's maintenance, it's not an infrastructure project. And there's allocations, you know, because every year, whether it's we, we upgrade SCADA software, that's every year. It doesn't work. That's a maintenance, that's a line item, it's gonna happen every year. We buy hot mix and stuff. That's every year. That's every year. So, some of the things that you might think of as projects, that's why, you know, we're, I've asked them to create a street scape. I want to know. This is, you know, we're identifying the areas in the city. We're going to be paving and milling and whatever X, Y, Z amount of streets. And, and also sidewalks and that type of thing. So a lot of that has gotten mixed in with the main, with the regular maintenance. Furthermore, we are using, I think someone said something about stormwater, man. We are using, utilizing that for capital improvement. To supplement and support the capital improvement. Thank you.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the transfer in ARPA funds? Is ten thousand all we're looking at?
No, it's not ten thousand, it's a hundred thousand.
It should be a hundred thousand.
On page nineteen.
It's got ten thousand, so that.
It's, it's also spread out. Like if you go to page one oh eight, there's another seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
I think seventy-five thousand went to solid waste.
Thank you for catching that.
And twenty-five went to garage.
Okay.
So you should see a transfer into those funds.
Okay, thank you.
So then is that a hundred and ten, or?
So the ARPA funds are in a separate bank. So, it, it will come out of that bank account into general fund, a hundred thousand. We're gonna send seventy-five to the solid waste, and twenty-five to the garage.
Okay. But where did you see ten?
Because it's a typo.
It's a typo. There should have been an extra.
We caught it, but the guys didn't catch it.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a summation of the other two?
Wow.
On page nineteen?
Yeah, it's coming into the general fund, and then it's being transferred out to those two.
Right, but it should be a hundred here.
Yes.
And then it's those other two figures.
Yeah, seventy-five million.
Okay.
Just missed a zero.
So is, is that total correct on that page, on page nineteen? Is that five point two million correct, or should that be five point three?
It should be five, it should be five point three.
And then we just need to cover.
Five two ninety-seven, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've only had ninety thousand, right?
Right. So we just, as we're going, we just need to carry another ninety thousand onto page twenty-three.
So, what else? Also on page nineteen, the transfer in for chamber slash FADC, went from seventy-eight down to sixty. And I know we've had some conversations about this, because I think that the county gives them three thousand dollars a year. I'm not sure what's in the other entities in town. I feel like we're paying way more than our fair share.
But we haven't reached a decision on that at all, right?
No, I don't.
Well, it'd be here, that's where we're gonna reach the decisions, in the budget, I guess.
I think you have seventy-eight.
I mean, we're talking about struggling to make ends meet. To me, this may be a luxury. I'll just say it straight out. I mean, maybe, I'm not agreed with here, I don't know, but it just, we've been paying a lot of money for a lot of years. And to find out, like, the county's only giving this much, and other kingdom cities giving so much, and, you know, they're all substantially, substantially less than this.
I thought when they gave the report, Mike, that she said that the contributions that the county was doing, other than monetary things, added up to be about the same amount.
I heard that. You're right, I heard that, but we do a lot of things.
And I don't know what those things are. And I don't know what those things are, but.
Well, okay, let's talk about what we do that's not monetary. There's a building that's being used. Is it utility free or is it just rent free?
They pay the utilities.
They do pay utilities, okay. So, that doesn't completely wash. Sorry.
Well, we also listened to the presentation that they gave. You know, they do a lot for the city. They do a lot for bringing businesses in. I mean, granted, if we want to, as a council, decide to, um, give less, it definitely deserves a conversation, I think, with the chamber.
Instead of waiting till the end of the year and say, hey, by the way, we're cutting you twenty-eight thousand dollars less for next year, when they're waiting for their budget decisions too.
I believe they're on the, um, agenda for next week.
Are they? Okay. Definitely it needs to be a conversation just out of respect for, you know, but everyone understands that budgets are tight.
I don't wanna pull the, the rug out from under them, but I mean, I just, and I hear from others, not just myself. This isn't just Mike, Mike's opinion.
Is that something we should do in executive session?
No.
Okay.
I think at some point, it would be, in, in my opinion, it would be nice to either give them that building or give them a good deal and let them own their own building. I mean, that, that's a, that's kind of a ambiguous cost for us. We don't know if from one year to the next, is it gonna be a roof in the next, you know, few years? Or, uh, the heat mayor may quit again. I know they spent some money. We've spent some money. I think long-term or maybe short-term, it'd be nice to talk about maybe, uh, what that would look like.
Right.
In my opinion, if, uh, to let them either own that building or, or start paying us rent or.
Do we owe anything on that? No, we owe it out, right?
I don't think so. Cause it was the police station, right?
And, and granted, they did a lot of work to fix that thing up. We did too. So, did the, the inmates did a fair amount of that. So, it was a kind of a big group effort. So, uh, but at some point, it, it just seems odd that, that we should, we should be owning that building and giving it to them free of use.
Is there any benefits to us owning it instead of gifting it or charitably donating it? Is there any benefits?
It's a cost. It's a, it's a cost. It costs us. Cause our people go down and repair it and whatever. We don't reap any benefits from it.
So, do we get any sort of tax breaks if we do donate it to them?
We don't pay taxes.
Ah, I guess that's true. Well, yeah, let's write that off.
Right, right.
Zero from zero.
We don't work like that.
I know, darn it.
I like the way you're thinking.
We're almost charitable ourselves.
I think Mike has a valid point. I think we're, we, we're talking about cutting, then I, I think everybody's, uh, everybody's not off the hook. We need to make sure that we look at and evaluate, uh, how much. We, like you said, not pulling the rug out from under them for something and don't, you need to look, to look at it.
Yeah.
And bring it up for discussion, that's for sure.
I think now's the time, guys. If they're gonna be here next week, it'd be a little bit less awkward to, to talk about it tonight and make a decision right now.
No, no, right, so we. Well, I think we definitely should give them the building. I don't think that there's any reason that we shouldn't do that, you know? I mean, I think that that's a start and then I, I feel like that's a generous donation too from the city. They're getting a building that they're, they don't have to pay for. Right now, they're rent-free. That takes the obligation off of us as well and.
Well, Lauren, if we, if we're giving it to them free, why should we donate it to them? Maybe later on, we can sell it.
We paid for that at one time.
I'm just saying, if we're giving it to them free.
I have no idea.
I would have to look and see because, you know, typically buildings are depreciated over thirty-nine years. So, I don't know if there's any book that we left on.
How long have we owned it? I mean.
Major Rice was there his whole career. He was there over forty years, right? So, I would assume there's.
Is that building?
It was forty years ago.
There's a car dealership part too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
I would assume there's probably nothing left on it.
That may need to be a separate discussion that, that's further down the road. I mean, I, actually, there's, there'd be a lot of, uh, things to talk about on that.
Yeah.
To them as well. They, they can't just say, oh, great.
Right. They might not wanna.
If it's not something they can maintain. That aside, I do believe the cut is probably something that we should consider very seriously. That's, you know, that's forty-eight thousand dollars that could pay someone's salary next year and, and we're gonna be needing, uh, needing every.
Well, thirteen now, right?
Oh, eighteen thousand.
Yeah, thirteen.
So, eighteen thousand, I mean, but that, that's a tough cut for them to take, but yet, uh, we're cutting in, in every other way too, so.
I did, I mean, was this number already, has this number already been discussed with them?
No, it has not, but I think they probably have caught wind of it, I'm guessing. Cause we did dis, you know, disperse the original, uh, draft last, uh, the, the last.
I mean, there for a while, we were charging it to the utilities. I don't know if we're, are we still doing it that way? That's what we're, okay. Probably something started. That's why I was wondering where it was transferred from, so, okay, so it's from gas.
That's not the whole amount though, was it? Seventy-eight?
No, the whole sixty comes from the utilities.
It was gas, electric.
Electric, gas, warming, so, yeah.
Yeah, but as far as I know, they would like to know as soon as possible what their budget's gonna look like. I'm sure. So, I think it's only fair for us to decide and, uh. Could we, could we ask for a motion on that, you think, Courtney?
We just can pass it as part of the budget. Unless someone's disputed.
Not necessarily gonna be approved in the whole budget finally tonight.
No.
It could be a, a change, you know, up until the very last point. I don't know.
I mean, it's either way, it is incorporated into the budget documents. It'll be passed by the city council. If you're wanting to get a final answer on it and want a motion on that specific item, that's, you know, you can, you can kind of do one or the other. But in the end, it's gonna be passed as part of the budget.
They said they'll be here next week, is that right?
Next week.
So, I mean, we could just say, in theory, we're sticking to that sixty now and not really have a definite motion, so say.
Anybody else have a number in mind? I mean, I just hate to pull it out from under them, but I just think it's kind of crazy.
Yeah, and I do too. And I also don't wanna put us all on the spot.
Right.
It's hard enough as it is.
No discussion. I am a chamber member, so I ain't know if I should, how much I should be a part of the conversation either, so.
You're a member.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think it's perfectly acceptable.
You're not on the board. You're not in the way.
We're all members.
We're all members too.
It'd be tough to do it if we all abstained for that, but that's a good point, so.
Valerie made me think of that earlier.
She gave you a conscience.
Yep, it's conscious, yeah. I feel like that sixty thousand dollars is still really generous and, you know, I, I don't feel like that that's pulling the rug out from under them. I know that it is eighteen thousand dollars less than we've given them in the past, but at the same time, everybody's having to cut their budgets.
Right.
You know, and I feel like that sixty thousand dollars, I feel like that the, I'm, I am a supporter of the chamber. You know, we are members of the chamber. I think that they do really good things for our community. And I feel like that sixty thousand dollars is still really generous with us being able to also make our budget, the ends meet on our budget.
Yeah. I guess I would like to see them approach some of the other entities and get more money out of other places than just us. Just because we have utilities, I mean, we can see what our utilities are doing right now. Yeah.
I'm sure Tamara, one of the folks, could probably speak to that more, but, you know, I understand is they have approached people and just, just not getting the money.
Yeah.
I'm sure she could speak to that a lot more.
Sure.
Well, I think let's stick with what we got and let's see what they have to say next week and, um, go forward with that. And we've got time, folks, till our next meeting to pour through this in great detail. It's just been presented to us tonight, so I like the format where I can kind of compare it from last year to this year now, so that's nice. I'll be able to look at it a little bit easier. Thank you all, the staff, for, for working so hard to get this together for us. I greatly appreciate it. I see some worn-out folks and, uh.
We're still going or we got?
I, you know, we've been at this a while. I don't know that we need to keep going. I think it'd be healthy for us to, to move this over on our, at our own pace now, in my opinion. We'll, we'll have more questions and Renee can answer those over, through emails, probably, easier. And we, we've got a group email that we can fire those questions as we get to them. And that way, we all see, um, what's being discussed and what's being clarified, so to speak. So, it's eight o'clock. I mean, we could keep going until ten or eleven o'clock or midnight if we wanted to.
Let's go. Let's do it.
All right. I've done it before, man. I ain't scared.
Speak for yourself.
I have a motion on the floor. We've been in discussion all this time, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we need to.
By all means, yeah.
Call the question.
We gotta.
And let us have some other pressing thing we're talking about tonight.
I said, thank you all a lot for the work that's gone into this and, um, didn't have a lot of turnaround time this week. Y'all did amazing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. We, we appreciate that and we appreciate you all's patience. Um, a lot of things changed on the dime, literally, over the last couple of months. And so, we kind of ended up being shorthanded, so, um, personally, I, I just wanna say thank you because there are instances of people asking me things. And I'll ask questions, but it takes them, sometimes like Councilwoman Seabarker, it clicks when it clicks. I'm like, oh, this is what, you know, this is why she's asking this. So, please continue. If you see typos, let us know. We have been at this since Saturday.
And there have been a lot of last minute changes.
Today, yeah. So, next year, we'll do better. I promise that.
Did you note the typo on page one seven, I was.
The ten, yeah.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second?
Just, Mayor, just, Mayor, please. Uh, how's things looking for with our sales tax?
Um, I have it run October shed. But it'll be on the report at the next meeting.
All righty. Hey, we do have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no?
No. That was me.
Oh, okay.
I said no.
Okay. So, that passes. We'll, we'll pass the ordinance forward till our next meeting. Thank you all. Um, is, is there a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Thank you.